Yeah.
Hi, Chris, can you hear us?
And you have one for yourself? I'm just gonna give one for their chair.
Just testing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was that road, they were proposing that road. Cause that's what I worked.
Are you in pollution, I don't even do them?
That day was coming out.
Do you want to take?
And this is the whole thing just got.
Okay. Yeah, I did that.
And it wasn't. The most. That I found. And if that's legal, that's fine. If I haven't.
We should have, like, if you'd like to get, but if you have. I was like, you know what? And we're like.
I don't know.
It's gotta be one or the other.
And if not, it's wetland. That might seem so. Maybe it's a man. I thought it was, but there's the. There's that like. I can't really.
Yeah, we have the experts here.
That's mine, I just.
I hear you.
First thing, I don't, I don't like that. I'm gonna be other. Unfair. And she will be there in the public.
Right, ready to go, everybody here on your side? All right, well, good evening and welcome, everybody, I'll ask at this point that we stand and. So, good evening, everybody, this is the January fourth meeting of the South Berwick Planning Board. Before we get into more of the formal items, I'd like to welcome the planning board from the town of South Berwick. My name is Greg, I'm the chair here, Greg Zenter is the chair of the planning board here, we'll go down here, I know that you know this lady down here, but for those that don't know, I could just have you introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Hannah Bonin, I'm from Southern Man Planning and Development Commission. So I will be working with both the towns of Ferg and Southford on this project and other projects you have.
Bill Hall.
Hershey Hershkop, she her programs.
That noble.
Jenny McCabe, town code enforcement officer, South Ferg and town planner.
I am your commissioner.
Sir, I generally, I want to plan a board for.
Matthew Scott Henry, planning board for Berwick.
Jared Grayville, planning board for Berwick.
Michael LaRue, Chair of the Planning Board in Berwick.
Irish.
I'm David Andreessen, I'm the coenforcement and planning technician, I also used to be on the planning board.
Okay, great. Well, welcome, everybody, thank you very much. I know this isn't official meeting for us, I would probably imagine from here, whatever decision we come to tonight, or most likely end up going back to you folks for some conversation. You'll probably follow up one way or the other with us in terms of what your intentions are as it pertains to the particular conversation, so it is a joint here, a joint meeting more or less. We're gonna be hearing tonight from a gentleman who has submitted an application. By our terminology, we refer to it as MSP twenty-two zero zero three. That's one item we're gonna be discussing tonight, but before we get into that, I'd just like to do some housekeeping items here, we've got through the introductions, but I'm gonna go back to the agenda to get through a few items. Are there any members here in the public here in this room that would like to make a comment? Seeing no comments here, are there any individuals on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, so the next item is I'm gonna ask for approval of the December seventh twenty twenty-two minutes, do I have a motion?
I make motion that we approve the December seventh twenty twenty-two minutes.
One second.
Second.
Been seconded, and is there any discussion? Okay, now I'm gonna just step back and ask, Chris. Ask that you take part in this, so we are gonna have to do a roll call vote, cause you're participating via Zoom tonight. Yeah, so we could, and I'm also gonna designate you for an active role in tonight's conversation for all of the business supporters. We're gonna be probably with us for quite some time in the book. Make sure that you're aware and clear on that, so I'm gonna, a roll call vote, we're December seventh twenty twenty-two, I'm gonna go to you.
I.
Gonna go to you, Bill.
I.
Okay, Greg is I.
I.
Hi.
Okay, the motion's unanimous, thank you. Just a notation for the records, December twenty-first twenty twenty-two, meetings canceled, there doesn't need to be a formal action of that. Just a notation in the binder. The next item under new business, there's a whole host of ordinance issues and you may recall, we discussed this a while back about having some changes to the subdivision and other associated land use. However, I'm gonna ask that that particular item right now be tabled until either at some point we'll take it off the table at the end of the meeting, or we'll put it on and untable it at the next meeting. I think tonight between old business and our conversation when we get to the MS four stuff is gonna probably consume quite a bit of time, so do I have a motion to table the ordinance amendment discussion at this point? Okay, but who seconded, second, gonna do roll call, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Christine.
I.
You go.
I.
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 Great, it's unanimous, so with that being said, we're gonna go right to old business. And we're gonna re-invite Ken Wood, I believe, correct, from SR Engineering to discuss with us sketch plan review of MSP twenty-two zero zero three, San Villa Estates subdivision, and so we heard from him briefly at our last meeting, we tabled it, requested this meeting here, we are today, so if there are no questions from this board, or this board, we can turn it over to the Ken and move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy New Year, everybody.
You as well.
Mr. Chair and Southford Planning Board, thank you for hosting the joint meeting with Berwick. With me tonight, Carol Mick, it's here, and John Pollard, Brown Mitt Construction. Close night, thanks to that straight one finger. We've been before this board in the past several times on this project. Starting way back in two thousand nineteen, actually in September eighteenth of two thousand nineteen, the board at that time voted to accept our sketch plan. I have that sketch plan with me, that sketch plan showed thirty-seven lots, and we were moving forward with preliminary plan, but on our end, there was some issues with right title and interest for some of the roads, they were all controlled by Carol Mick, but under different entities, and by the time we straightened the entities out and proved we had sufficient right title and interest on all the roads, all the private roads, our sketch plan accrual had lapsed, so since then, we've actually moved to doing the work for preliminary plan, we have had a pre-app with DEP, we've got a pre-app at the. We've straightened out any environmental questions. At IFNW survey, the rabbit scat, to see if they were cotton tailed, they were not. We've done a black racist survey with IFNW, there are no black racer concerns. We did a spotted and landing turtle survey with Stan Tech, and there were no turtle concerns, other than finding one painted turtle. So I'm really back before you, seeking approval of my sketch plan, so we can go forward with preliminary plan before this board and the DEP. This is the, can everyone see this, all right, this is a sketch plan which we're proposing, it's a cluster subdivision, this is in the after we zone, it's map thirteen, lot seventeen, seventeen, eight, and one hundred, it's about a hundred and seventy-five acres. When you do the net density.
Can you just call out which one you're looking at?
Which plan, which, which page you're on? I am on page one point one?
Yeah. I visit there. Oh, that good, I can see it as well here. Wanna try and follow me here?
Definitely. Go ahead. When you do the net density counts, you end up with about sixty-eight acres, which in the zone with an eighty thousand, we have put lot requirement, puts us at thirty-five lots, that's the maximum number of lots that we could, we're allowed to put by zoning law. So we possess it as a cluster with thirty-five lots. Let me back up a minute, because it's similar to. I should have preface with this, I apologize. There is an existing subdivision called Meadow Pond Estates off Knights Pond Road, that Carol and Nick Construction developed. There's phase one, which was, in this plan, Knights Pond Road is here. There's phase one, which was a clustered development. Then there's phase two. So phase one, phase two of Meadow Pond Estates, it's a similar cluster developer, to what we're proposing for phase three. Lots about, some are a little less than an acre, some are a little more than an acre. The ordinance allows twenty thousand square foot lots, these lots would all be on onsite individual wastewater systems and municipal lots.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Just for a second, and just let the planning board in first that know that you guys actually have a copy of every single fan in your binder, if you wanna look at it there, too.
The cluster subdivision results in about eighty-eight hundred square feet of wetland impact, all for the road crossings. But according to the ordinance, and we had worked with David Albright on this, when he was also doing your reviews, we're also required to do a conventional subdivision plan for a new. This is what a conventional subdivision would look like with the thirty-five lots. There's no rate waiver requirements requested in that, those roads meet your design standards for horizontal vertical curvature. There's no dead end helvisx, I believe, there only slits those to six hundred square, six hundred linear feet. The conventional subdivision, which is not something we prefer, would result in about twenty-eight thousand square feet of wetland impact. The reason we don't prefer a conventional subdivision, are a couple of reasons, our roads are longer. Utilities, namely water runs would be longer, we do have more wetland impacts, the lots are larger in area, so they don't really replicate Meadow Pond one and Meadow Pond two, the previous plans I showed you. And there's really no open space, so preference is, can have the boards approve a cluster subdivision and sketch plan, so we can move forward. I think Jen mentioned, maybe before the meeting started, I did have a conversation with Dennis Plant, the fire chief, I believe he also spoke with the fire chief in Berwick. I, there are copies of that email, and I think Jen agreed to email those out, he had a couple suggestions, which we don't have any issue with. One is providing Knox boxes on the road, we had proposed a gate with a Knox box at the end of Industry Drive, so all the residential traffic. Thank you.
Yeah, so everybody has a copy of that, yeah.
So, one of the issues on access was, we would prefer to keep our residential traffic separate from the industry drive, commercial traffic. I don't believe the residents of Meadow Pond one and Meadow Pond two would prefer a through road from Route four to Knights Pond, so we had proposed, and also based on a traffic analysis by my consultant Sewell company, that we would gate it with a Knox box. I believe both fire chiefs agree to that, as long as both towns have access with their keys for the Knox box, which isn't a problem to us. The other suggestion that Dennis had, and I believe that the fire chief himself, they both also had it, was to locate a hydrant on the other side of the gate, which would provide firefighting capacity in industry drive or to any tanker trucks that needed to fill up, and we don't have a problem with it, so. In summary, I'd like you to approve my sketch plan, we have all the environmental issues resolved, we have comments from the fire and police chief. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions any of you have.
So, I'm a little old in dim sometimes, I might not be remembering this well, but last spring, I distinctly remember that we asked for the primary entrance to the site to be off in this, be off Route four in the industry dive, because we felt this would have the traffic coming in through the two existing cluster subdivisions would have a big impact on people there. I did read the traffic report, I read all the other reports, and, and I read through our notes, and it, it, the idea of a lockbox and a gate didn't seem to pop up till much later. And so, I'm wondering why that changed.
I believe it popped up later versus she is because the board at the spring meeting, I think it was the April and May meeting, had asked for a traffic analysis.
Right.
Which we did, and Sewell also recommended separating the residential traffic from the commercial traffic. Are you suggesting that?
They recommended that on industry drive, I thought, not.
They did, yeah, right, well, I have a Knox box on industry.
So you have a gate there, we, we never contemplated a gate, as far as I, are you agreeing with me or disagree?
I'm completely agreeing with you.
Okay, I'm not that old.
Maybe, that's all right, maybe I'm not following you.
I, my recollection is, we did not wanna have all this traffic impact Meadow, what is it?
Pond Estates.
Meadow Pond Estates, and have everybody use that as their primary entrance, we thought that was a burden on the homeowners there. So we asked that actually the primary entrance be through industry drive.
So would you?
But now it seems to be there's a change, and a, a gate has been, has appeared, which the first mention I found is October thirteenth. I don't remember it being discussed originally, and maybe I missed it. But I, I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because I thought that was gonna be the way into this thirty-five unit development.
So are you suggesting any gate, or that there's a gate?
I, I thought that would be the primary entrance, so there'd be no gate.
Understand, but if it's a primary entrance.
Right.
Are you suggesting that we control the traffic with signage?
I'm not suggesting anything.
But the roads open all the way through.
I'm suggesting that the road be open all the way through that, so that people come off of Route four to enter this development and not go through the other two. Which, from what I see in the back here, is there's some agreement with, I assume people were homeowners there, though.
Yes.
Okay. So and, and they did show up at some point, a big group of them who represented the homeowner association, and I believe that was also their particular wish now. You could of course meet the code, and there's nothing we can do about this, but that is my recollection of what we had asked for.
If the board decides they'd like to do that, I'd just like to get our traffic consultant on board. I mean, if the board said to me, Ken, we want the road open, we'll approve the sketch plan conditionally, I probably wouldn't have an issue with that, but I'd want them to weigh in.
Right, and you know, it wasn't just the road open, I mean, I've been down that road, and it's, it's, you know, it's a mess, sorry, I don't wanna say that, it's industrial, right? And it doesn't feel like you're entering somebody's neighborhood or going down a little residential road, and I don't know what to do about that, but it did sort of get raised as, well, how do we solve that problem? So I don't know if that means there would be some kind of alternate route for industry or something else, and I thought your traffic report actually talked about that, so. So, and no, I don't have an answer to that, I'm just, I'm just throwing out what I remember and what I think might be a better solution for everybody, all the people already live there.
I just wanna, I just wanna back up a little bit and ask for your confirmation on a couple things, because we have I just wanna ask for some clarifications, because we heard, a prior board heard this back in twenty nineteen, and that was approved at the time, and so the question would be, well, why are we back as sketch plan? The time elapsed before they could get the preliminary plan into us, so basically they have to start over another one. And I'm really just saying this for those here, those on, you know, Zoom. And so then, back in, one of the questions I had that I looked into over the past couple of weeks, when we got this information, is back in May or April, one of those two meetings, there was conversation, there was another gentleman really referencing, well, you know, which led to some confusion about, under a traditional subdivision, you know, we can only get seventeen, but if we get this waiver for a road length, now we can do thirty-five. And then at the last meeting, it kinda took a little bit of a different turn, I was expecting to hear last then, you know, last meeting, and then here, you know, that a waiver was going to be needed, but the reality is, a waiver is not needed, because you've redone and, and you're kind of retooled the development, now so that no waivers are needed. So therefore, would, you know, no, I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that, because that was a question that I had about where, how did we get from all the, this waiver request, and now no waivers are needed, and it's gonna be a thirty-five lot subdivision, because prior, you know, we didn't grant the road waiver request, it would have been like twenty, you know, so, but, but anyway, but we're, we're here, and the density with their road redone is such that you're allowed thirty-five and no waiver requests.
That's correct, okay.
And so so that's why we're here, I do recall Hershey, and I'll be perhaps a little bit differently, there was some concern about the access and traffic. You know, cause adding thirty-five homes and all the associated people with that's quite a bit more, you know, people and guards. I think my recollection, without going back and looking at it, may be slightly different in the sense of, I thought the conversation was put a gate between the old and the new, and make them come in strictly off of Route four with no throughway. Now, I'm not saying I would agree with that, because again, it comes down to the ordinances and what we have to review and how we do that. But I wanna say that was part of the conversation, so we did say we're gonna need a whole host of these, DEPs and, you know, all the IFW, you did that, you got the traffic study. Which now resulted in a gate being put, kind of between whatever road and industry drive, I'm allowing, yes, to prevent people from coming in. Which still leads to increased traffic, you know, coming in through Meadow Pond, and you know, one of the larger concerns that I have is, I think we're gonna wanna talk about it some more. What, if anything, we can do about it, I don't know, but there's a lot of kids out there. And adding thirty-seven more homes with kids, I just get concerned about the, the traffic flow, you know, I, I live on a residential street with a cul-de-sac, and I see people coming in and out pretty fast. So.
This was in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, oh, was it?
Yes.
So you what kind of reverted to that one, then?
To less lots, yes, and in the meantime, we had done the high intensity soils.
Right, oh, you did do one, because I saw a reference in here that, oh, no, that was the wetland delineation, right, you haven't quite done that yet, from what I understand.
What, no, the wetland delineation and a high intensity soils.
Okay, I saw the high intensity, but Hershey, didn't we see something that said the wetland had happened, though?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, your archipelago, archipelago.
October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I've not reviewed wetland delineation or other similar information that would really be included in an. Yeah, I've not reviewed wetland delineation or other similar information that would really be included in an application.
He just means he hasn't reviewed what we did.
Oh, okay, what you're gonna have to do anyway.
And we've done, so we've done the delineation, the show's on the plan and it's referenced.
He just hasn't, he hasn't reviewed it for.
Michael Morris hadn't reviewed it. He meant he didn't go out in the field and re- review. He had our plans. Michael Morris was asked by the attorney on the project Sandy Day, who had had. Several discussions with David Ballby to address the possibility of permitting. The wetland impacts, that's.
So, one of the things I would add, as we talk about the gate. I would ask for some consideration, I think, we're going to want to probably talk about it some more depending on where that gate discussion goes. Probably some other type of traffic calming measure and say, for example, we say no, no to the gate, right? Because we want people to be able to come in both sides. Are there speed bumps, narrowing of the roads, uh you know, all the sidewalks that can, you know, which can reduce. Uh traffic to slow it down. What are those other traffic calming measures that could be put in? To prevent. Speeding and try to reduce the amount of cut curves. Uh I think those are items that I would want to. Review as part of the preliminary if, you know.
It's a, it's a town road that way.
What is?
Um the one that comes in from Meadow Pond Estates is a town road.
Are they all town roads?
Does that mean the town has real power?
No, town, that belongs to Berwick. What was that?
Does the town have the power or the right to put in a gate if they want to?
We can only be done to a condition on that.
You guys can condition it.
Right.
The town can't do it without a condition.
Right.
The town would just go and propagate in there.
No, I.
Condition the application or do you do that? Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question here. Would that need to come from the public works director too? Can have a conversation with him about that?
Hello.
Putting a gate, also what you were saying about the traffic.
Well, I think if it goes to, if we put this to preliminary. I want to be clear to make sure that I'm understanding. This is just, this is just the sketch. There's still ample opportunity to have further conversations. About what we're talking about here. The project is not approved. We're going to approve the concept. Traditional or cluster essentially.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
And Hannah, if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, but all, all the sketch plan does is really. Offer the applicant feedback from the board so that when they come for preliminary. All your concerns are met if they can be met, or he, Mister Wood at that time would explain why they can't be met.
Yeah, and I'm not hearing any waiver requests at this point.
Yep.
And so I think it comes down to the discussion on the traffic. Which we can say approve it as cluster. Or traditional, you know, whatever the board wants to go in whatever direction, but I am concerned about the traffic. And I'm gonna want, personally, I would ask for some consideration, discussion on. Traffic calming measures, a gate, and I really would want to talk to.
Jerry.
Yeah, the, and the police, you know, because again, you know, you're, you have a residential zone in South Berwick that. On some type of proposal would be cut off in the middle. So now you're saying to our police and fire, in an emergency, I get it's a Knox box, you know, you can get out, open it up, open it up. You know, that prevents a faster response to our own residents.
Well, and also, I I believe the Berwick Planning Board is here because. A good chunk of that road is, you know, in Berwick and they have their own set of standards of what. Can, I mean, this might be a new coin, I mean, what can and cannot be built and how that would work on their end, so I'd really like to hear. While we're talking about the road, what they think about this.
Yeah, any, any thought?
I might, can I ask a question?
Go, go right ahead.
There's, are there any residences or any homes going into Berwick? That if they're being built?
No, no, the project's totally self-erupt, with exception of the connecting, the.
The connecting road, which is five hundred feet, correct?
Yeah, so here's. Here's the development.
Right.
Here's the timeline and here's Industry Drive.
And there's five hundred feet of Industry Drive.
Ye- yes, I'd say that.
That doesn't have any residences on it at all.
That's correct.
It's currently paved.
Like that portion of?
No, it's pretty. And you'd have to get up to standards, let's say.
It's about five hundred feet of. Industry drive on that portion of the road where there are no residences before you get to the timeline.
Okay. Yeah, right now that road basically goes right next to where that fire hydrant is, right next to the, right at that wet pond. It, well, it doesn't go all the way up to that, but it goes basically to the town line.
I think the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really rough.
Ken, can I just ask you a question? Are you putting in the gate right there to prevent any road improvement to Industry Drive?
No.
No?
Oh, I was, I'm only putting in, I was only suggesting a gate to separate traffic.
Okay.
I mean, if you, I think Mr. Chair, if you said to me and and you pretty much uh mentioned it. You know, come back to us with some options for either a gate here or a gate. Here, on no gate and cop and traffic calming. Uh items, I would go back to Sewell and say, hey, we're going to preliminary plan hopefully, and you give me some. Ideas that we can discuss with the board and then board could see it to either adopt them, not adopt them, or maybe send them out to a outside review. Gate, no gate, no gate, traffic calming. Uh you might want us to look at, I mean, the the thirty-five homes, single family. Detached residential generates by the IP about nine point nine trips per day, so, but let's say. Thirty seven, thirty five, say we have three hundred fifty trips per day. Maybe you would also like me to add, so if there are no gates. What's the circulation? How many of these homes are going through Meadow Pond Estates? And how many are going up Industry Drive to Route four? That might be something you'd like to consider.
I would be looking for a list of options.
Yeah.
So with the option outcomes, some of those that you mentioned.
Yeah.
And other options that Sewell would come up with.
Fair enough. I think that's a good suggestion. With the option of no gate, I'd give you probably the circulation.
But I'm just one member, so. But I'd like to hear more from you too, what you're thinking.
So I kind of have something that's uh, it's a slightly different topic, but uh there is a cement mixing. Plant like right over here.
Northeast.
Yeah, uh what are your thoughts of screening or sound deadening around that area? Well, I don't, well, because I mean, I understand it's five hundred feet, but I mean, if they're working there all day. If you're in the lot thirty, you're probably going to hear it all day.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's existing cover in here. I don't think we can actually go onto that property and screen it. That's the concrete.
No, I'm not saying the concrete. I'm saying that the road, like where, where rate. Basically on the line, the Berwick.
Yeah, right in here?
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, is vegetation in in there now or?
No, it's all grass, I'm pretty sure, right? We've walked that several times.
Haven't we?
Yeah.
We can, we can approve it and then create a problem for you on the other end.
Right, well, I, I mean, I would just. If I was going to be buying a house over there, I kind of want it, you know, separate from the industry area, so if there's some, a distinct. Separation, so one, you could have some trees to screen, because I mean, that would help with sound a lot.
I don't, I don't think that's.
And also, I, I mean, I haven't been there in a while, but as I remember, there's just big expanses of piles of dirt, piles of rocks and piles of wood.
It's been getting moved, uh but it, yes, yes.
Give you guys a, let's just go backwards for a second. It's, it's me and Mike.
Yeah.
So they put another business in there, so Northern School and Spa.
Yeah.
So the A building in there. Yeah, if you haven't been down there, you should. It's, it's neat down there, ready, but it's neat. Um I had a conversation with the Berwick Town Manager, probably like a month ago on the phone about this. Um, the applicant would need to bring the road up to town standard is my understanding from Mister Listnow, their town manager. And um there's, there was a couple of other things that he wanted you guys to review and look at, so that's a great idea. Um, that's why you're here. So, but um how, so Reagan's trying to figure out from you guys how you feel about that gate, that locked gate. Like, I know how you feel about it, so just say.
I don't like it. I don't like. I'd rather have it open and and make that road. Set and make it to town standards. I mean, if the town, if Ber- if South Berwick is going to use that and have municipal plow it. I mean, then what, where, it's going to stop at our line and then we have to plow the rest? I mean, is that how that's going to go? So, I mean.
Yeah, the other, the other concern is the danger of turning out of Industry Drive, the dangerous spot. State Road, those are all things that we need to consider, and the Berwick Planning Board probably should consider.
Well, that's what brought us to this and that was really concerning that we identified back in April, man.
And also, just on a more human scale, um it's we paved, I assume there are sidewalks, it looks like, on one side of the road.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not asking for, thank God. Um, actually, it's a variance, not a worry.
What?
A variance, losing the sidewalks would be. Struggle with the fourth people, but the sidewalk would have to extend out to Route four, I think, right?
Hmm, no, uh it could end right, right at the, well, not at the gate, but at the. Does that, uh, we don't have a.
Because, because. Want me to get picked up by the school bus or to stop right there?
There's going to have to be some type of turnaround.
Yeah, the, the school bus is going to come pick them up and turn around. Or they're going to go, or they're going to walk the other way through Meadow Pond space.
So most likely the school bus wouldn't be picking up South Row kids on an Industry Drive, Berwick Road, so that's something to consider as well with families going in there.
So families just wouldn't be eligible to be picked up?
No, they'd probably.
Yeah, most likely.
So at the end there by the gate, you'd have to have some type of turnaround.
The school bus can't, can't cross the town.
They, they normally will just turn around like a north one's the road. They just have a turnaround right at the York, South Row line. That would be a good question for the school department.
Isn't there no way to get into there without going into Berwick?
Monorail.
Well, I thought the pro- part of the problem is that there's no.
Oh no, they're going to get there through the current road structure through.
Yeah, Meadow.
Yeah, okay.
So Meadow Pond, if you're not familiar, comes up Knights Pond Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I think the question now is, they're saying they don't want a gate.
Oh, I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, I get it, yeah, I get it. Yeah, and I'm saying, I'm.
I'm wondering.
Kind of not here nor there at this point.
One of the reasons was um not mixing the residential with industrial traffic and what. Can you speak to that a little bit about what the problem is or what the concern is with mixing the two?
Really, not more than I meant. I mean, Industry, Industry Drive has. Daily heavy industrial traffic just due to the lines. I don't think it's a large generator, but it has traffic. And the consultant felt that. The preference was me to keep all the residential traffic through the residential subdivision.
Yeah, it'd be weird driving, you know, like leaving your home and you'd be going to this sort of little area of, you know, some, right, big trucks coming in and out and people not seeing it. Around things and, you know, all that stuff.
I suppose, but as a commuter, I think that would be a faster way to go in. So I don't. I think the, like cost benefit analysis of being able to access. The development through that way would outweigh. The, I don't know, it doesn't seem like there's a huge, huge issue with mixing the two, it's just. Kind of weird situation.
Yeah, I mean, for someone traveling, as we said, Portsmouth, Dover, Summersworth, you'd want to do. That instead of doing.
Would you want to buy that little strip of property right here?
So it would involve you doing more roadwork than beyond.
Well, we planned on it, we always planned on it. Where's the, where's Route four?
I've never been down.
Last two lots on Industry Drive.
Okay.
You're emptying out on the Route four eventually, correct?
Right, yes, Industry Drive goes to Route.
What is the speed limit in that area? Is that fifty-five? That's, see, that's my concern.
So I think DOD's going to have to weigh in.
There, there you go.
Or when you go out to Knights Pond. Yeah, it's, it doesn't really matter, it was the same thing. Either one you go out to is going to have the same problem.
I mean, there's also the current traffic study going on.
Hang, hang on, one at a time, I'm losing track of everybody. When I, can you finish what you said, Bill?
Uh whether you go out to Knights Pond or or out Industrial Drive, you're going to end up. Within like half mile or something, right?
Here's a current traffic study with this, with the state on that road as we speak.
There is.
Been made with the town manager on.
But there are plenty of places that come on and off Route four there.
Several accidents. Nine miles of Berwick that has had many accidents in the past and um, yeah.
So I think that's kind of the thing that.
Two cats.
Yeah, remember, the, the, the speed limit's fifty-five. The, the site distance on Route four in Industry Drive is rated at a thousand feet in either direction, east or west. The recommended site distance for fifty-five mile an hour posted speed limit is five hundred and fifty feet. So there's plenty of site distance. You know, they are uh. I think she's given us the count, there's something like about ten thousand cars a day. Two thousand thirteen, sixteen and nineteen, between ninety-eight hundred and. Ten, then ten thousand, two thousand sixteen, about ninety-seven, twenty, two thousand nineteen, that's the amount of traffic on Route four.
Someone else from Berwick was going to say something. No?
We're certainly glad if the boards decide to want to evaluate options at preliminary plan, we're going to be happy to do it.
I mean, for, I mean, as long as the road is up to standards for Berwick, I mean, there's not much we'd really do, but. One thought is, is maybe having a turnaround right at the town line. So that way there's access from the municipal to turn around for plowing and.
School bus.
School bus or, you know, just. Hannah, did you have anything that you wanted to offer on this?
Wow. Oh, great question. Um, one comment, but I think that just not covered, the improvements to Industry Drive would have to be made regardless of if there is a gate. Regardless of if we establish one way or the other as the primary or, yeah, really. The primary entrance, those improvements will have been made, be made regardless. Other than that. I discussed with Jenny earlier about the waiver question um that you have resolved. They no longer needed any waiver requests. I mean, I've kind of jumped in in the middle of this, so I've gotten as up to speed as I can from all of Dave's past memos, all the past communications and everything. But. The, the gate, the question of whether or not there's a gate where it is. You apply your time for that.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever, whatever you approve as kind of the general conceptual. Plan, you're not saying gate has to be in one place or another, so you have, you have a long time to decide whether or not you want those specific things.
Mister Chair, I'm just going to piggyback what she's saying and let um both boards know that I had a lengthy um conversation with Lijay Feldman today. About policy and procedure on this and what's to come and um we would. Greg, our uh chair, the chair, would be looking through us letter from the town of Berwick. Um with the standards written out for us as well, so that when we do finalize this application, we can condition that portion.
So I'll be honest with you, you know, at this point, if there's anything else from Berwick, because I know you're going to go back and talk about it. The question really for us tonight is conventional. Or clustered. And, you know, whether or not we want to approve the sketch plan. I don't see a reason why, other than what you've heard about the traffic concerns and there are numerous traffic concerns. I think, I I can't see any reason why we would hold that back at approval, just a matter of traditional versus cluster.
Yes, I, I had a good question and I, maybe I'm seeing the wrong project, but um the. Were you thinking of handing over all of the open space to the great work of Julian Press and you and moving setup with them?
Uh, I don't think I was thinking of anything.
Oh, okay.
One of the suggestions from IFW was a great ticket program to, or she might look at that. Yeah, take a look at it, it's pretty interesting. It's on the IFW website, I can send you.
Yeah, it'd be great.
The contact info card is uh to reestablish having that. Oh, I can forward some information to Anna and Amy and they can distribute it.
Okay, prevent people from doing anything else with all.
Yeah, of course, once it was designated as open space too, but.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think we are against having a third party hold the open space. It might just be. Who's the best candidate? I've used great words before, I have a couple subdivisions in York, work great.
So if the sketch plan is uh approved tonight. They'd be clear enough to go to preliminary planning. They'd be clear enough to go to preliminary planning, where you could just discuss in more detail. From my perspective. What I'm hearing more is the traffic concerns. I think is gonna be a bigger issue during the sketch plan.
Great, uh, yeah, Zach, go right ahead, uh, one question and then it's as much, cause I'm still somewhat new, but. I'm hearing thirty-five units is what we're going with proposal now, whether it's cluster or. Conventional.
That's right, okay.
The, but the document, this application. Had mentioned it in at thirty-seven, is that? I don't know, I'm just looking at the date on it, it looked like, it looks like it's twelve twenty-two.
You know, I had an older application and I might have goofed it on.
I think it's the original one that they then.
Yeah, I thought that's, as long as we're just all clear that thirty-five, it's still, then that's good.
Yeah, I could have. So it's moved to preliminary plan and we'll get that. Full discussion about the completeness of the application. And then. What in there do we have the site lock?
So that's after. Finally, application.
That's right.
We'll go ahead and set up the public hearing.
Okay, what, what?
I, I have one more quick question.
You're, you're right, I was wrong, I thought, I carried the thirty-seven over, but it should be thirty-five, thank you.
And the application says, is any portion within two hundred and fifty feet of a high watermark of a Chon River saltwater body? Is the wet pond detention pond, is it a manmade pond, is that why? You're not counting that, okay.
Chris, I wanna go to you, give you an opportunity to speak on this, I'm sorry, I.
No, it's fine, I, um, you have addressed everything that I was going to address, so that's been satisfying. Um, my question is, if we approve the uh, sketch plan and we move to preliminary. Are we able to change in our conversation after that point, the number of units?
No.
Now, so we're, we're, we're taking an overall sketch and that number is, is not changing after tonight if we approve the sketch.
Because that's driven by the ordinance calculation, that's just a straight up calculation that we really can't, can't alter that.
All right, that was my only question.
Yes, if, if something, for instance, is discovered later. Like suddenly, I don't know, a black racer snakes, like a whole nest of them show up, then. And they were working, like something else happens that was sort of unusual, then you would change. You'd have to, right?
Yeah, the number of units can be changed.
Right.
But the board cannot dictate. That change in the way, like the, the net density calculations say that they can have thirty-five lots, they can have thirty-five lots. Something comes up and they're like, oh no, there's actually a gigantic wetland crater right here that we didn't know about. Go along with the number of lots, but if, this is not holding you to that.
And they lost a lot.
So the sketch plan just offers.
Right.
Ordinance.
So then it really gives them the direction for moving forward. In terms of traditional versus conventional, here are our general concerns. Anything, anything from Berwick on your end?
I do.
Oh, God.
What's, what's our way ahead? How are we gonna interact with South Berwick? And prove, are, are we gonna vote on it things, I just, I, I know the answer, I just want you to lay it out.
So, so next steps for the Berwick Planning Board is to, uh, I don't know if you have it on tomorrow's agenda or if it's for the next meeting. On some meeting night on the agenda, you will discuss this and decide whether or not you want to waive your rights to be part of the review. Um, or if you want to stay involved, uh, you, if you choose to waive your rights, essentially you're saying. Take it from there, as long as you're improving that portion of the road to the Berwick standards, we're good, keep us in the loop, but we will not. Be involved from this point forward, um, if you choose to stay involved, we would continue to have joint meetings and you would be um, involved in the rest of the process.
Now, there's, there's no homes that are being built in Berwick.
Yes.
So we're just looking at the five hundred feet of the road.
Yes.
Essentially. Now, ten years from now. You can have somebody come in there and say they wanna put in some homes in Berwick, then it will go to the Berwick Planning Board.
Yes.
So. You guys, Berwick Planning Board, need to look at whether or not you wanna stay involved, you wanna continue going to these meetings, knowing that. Only thing that they're gonna do is improve the road, not gonna put any houses in Berwick, or you can. Ask me to go to these meetings with Hannah and um, save, you know, save your guys a, you know, a Wednesday night out. Um, either way, I'm completely fine doing it. I, I don't wanna make more work for the planning board, so. Is, is there one more issue, would there be signage on Route Four? Or no, we're coming into the development.
Naming the developer?
Yeah, is there gonna be some like, you know, Sanville State sign that's gonna end up somewhere? On the South Berwick side and the, on Route Four. So people can find it.
Uh, they're gonna plug in GPS, I'm gonna take them to some other.
Was that? As far as any homes in Berwick, any future homes, they would not be on this portion of the.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm just, I'm letting our, you know, Berwick Board know. This is pretty cut and dry, this is just five hundred feet of a road. As long as the road standards are all in place, then I think that. You can allow me or Hannah or Lijay to go to these meetings and just monitor what's going on. And just take it from there, unless you guys wanna come out here to these meetings.
I have a, a question for Hannah, because James uh, gave me some very important instructions today, which were to. Um, he's under the impression that these applicants need to come before our board at, at our offices. So that our public can have their voiced opinions on this, is that it? And if so, at what point should these people come before us?
They, they should, they should, you should start thinking about. Doing it now.
Is the requirement, because we're in five hundred feet of the town line, that we need to come before?
Because you're doing, it's James's impression that you, uh, James was more. It's his impression that because you're doing any work on our side of the town line, that you need to come before. Our side planning board and he has, he has expressed to me, he has a, a very. Strong concern about the residential traffic going through the industrial park, which is. In direct conflict with you, I'm pretty sorry.
Like, no, it's okay.
But, you know, his concern is we do have mixers from all vehicles, um, you know, you're talking families, thirty-five families, which are gonna have inexperienced drivers who are not. Familiar necessarily with, um, you know, I grew up in the construction world, so I know they can't stop on a dime, these kids may not. Uh, these families may not, so there's that concern for James as well, which.
Totally appreciate that.
Might have been part of the driving force for the gate too, it's, is keeping people that don't necessarily understand how. Uh, an industrial park.
Yeah.
And the, the, the equipment in an industrial park operates could potentially cost harm to these families. Um, and I think that's something that we wanted. Our board to be able to assess, and that might be part of where the gate issue came in.
I think you guys need to, we, you talk about a follow your process and then let us know.
Where you land.
Where you land on that and. We'll try to answer the on that as far as our ordinances allow us to.
I just wanna get that. Everybody going smoothly.
So before, hold on, Mister. Mister Chair, if I might.
Yeah.
Hannah, um. I had a conversation with James and he wasn't even gonna do a joint meeting, so as the staff planner over there. You might wanna have a conversation with him before Ken schedules that, that's not typical of what the Berwick. Um, town would do. And honestly, that would be a waste of Ken's time if that wasn't the way it's supposed to go for policy and procedure, so I would talk to James and I would talk to Lijay. And then maybe schedule Mister Wood on your end, that's just my advice, I agree with everything that James is saying. But when I talked to him, he was like, oh, we'll just write a letter and everything will be fine, so that's way different than what he told me and that was about a month ago. Um, I can actually look up the date and the conversation if you need to, just so that he's on the same page with his staff and with you. And with our applicants, so we're not wasting time.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything explicitly that says you need to go in front of the Berwick Board or not, since there isn't any. Presidential construction or anything, if the whole subdivision was split, that'd be a different story, since it's the road, I don't know if there's anything one way or another, so I will.
I would like to have some further follow-up. With the fire chief, who would hopefully have a follow-up, the Berwick Fire Chief regarding that gate that Irish was talking about.
Yes.
Particularly when it comes to, you know, police, fire and EMS response. Um, it's kind of a distance from your station. And they were thinking, we have to get there, we're not gonna have. That perhaps that level of accidents or interactions and traffic incidents. I'd like to kinda have some more of their background thought on.
Sure.
Why they're agreeing by putting a gate in.
The other thing is too, um, when you think of life safety and you think of, okay, we're gonna. Put this road in, and we've talked about this before, we're gonna put this road in and we're gonna lock it, we're gonna gate it, whatever that looks like, or we're not. It's just as important for people to be able to get out as the fire trucks to get in, so a lot of times we sit here and say, well, the.
Yeah.
You know, emergency personnel needs to get in, people need to get out too. And that, that was something that had always come up because of life safety. Measures, you know, North Berwick is gonna be close to respond to that, South Berwick's gonna be close to respond to it, Berwick Fire Station's a little bit further out.
All right.
An underpass?
Anything from Berwick at this point? No, you're from good folks.
Last project we had in both towns was the outlet golf course. He was my client number two, to be fair. The clubhouse was divided by the town line, there were a lot of discussions on a gate, because back then, South Berwick was dry. We wanted to serve liquor on the Berwick side of the clubhouse and on the South Berwick side, how we wanted to separate.
So, and I think you heard a lot from us tonight, our concerns about traffic, I think there's gonna need to definitely be. Higher level review, further analysis on that, uh, other than that, you know, traditional or cluster. Uh, and is there a motion to uh, accept the sketch plan as traditional or clustered, as the board wanted it?
You, you're lucky, we talked about the road and we haven't focused on anything else. I make a motion that we accept the cluster plan.
Been moved, but you're seconded by Zach, uh, for just, uh, any further conversation. On that, Chris, I'll just look to you, anything further, okay, we'll take it, I'll vote, then Chris, we'll start with you, all in favor?
Hi.
Any motions unanimous and. The uh, cluster subdivision concept, concept has been approved, you've heard our concerns and. We'll kinda also wait to hear back from you folks too, and if you want some of us at one of your meetings, happy to do that too.
Right.
Thank you, okay, thank you also. We will move to a preliminary plan, we'll come back with the application and some options on traffic. As far as Berwick goes, I think I, I'm waiting to hear.
So, I do have one question, the process related, how long you think you're gonna, before you get that into us, it's gonna be next meeting or sometime in February?
Probably sometime in February, most of the materials put together, because we were there, but probably sometime in February.
Yeah, but okay.
Get my graphic study redone.
And we'll have some more, well, if we don't have to approve the, the preliminary right away. You, you, you hear, you heard us.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for having us, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wood.
Thanks.
Both from Berwick, thank you very much for attending. Yeah. How can, how can they restrict any traffic on?
I don't actually know.
I mean, I can go and drive down any industrial road there.
Oh, okay.
Right, unless it's a private road.
That's cool, this.
You can put, you can put restrictions, you can go weight limits, you can put all types.
They say that we're not simply.
We probably should not be. We probably should not be talking.
Well, we're, we're here.
All right, are we all ready to resume the meeting, Amy? All right, next business, uh, next item under whole business, we're gonna spend some time tonight talking with Christie Rivas. Regarding the letter that she sent to us on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for those that may remember. We had a meeting, I think back in August, where we were kinda given a general update and where it's saying the trajectory of where things were at. Uh, and I'm going to, so Christie's gonna get into some more detail. Uh, necessary in order to meet those MS four uh, ordinance required. New changes come about. But I'm gonna say before, before we get into that detail. Wasn't that at that same meeting where we said, hey? Uh, we wanted to have that joint meeting with some of the town councilors. So that we can kinda get this thing moving and not have our own process and then probably send it off them and then they do their process, it would be kinda, or when they burn some. There, you can have mine. Yeah, and so um. I guess we'll wait to kinda see where you're headed.
Yeah, I'll give you, I'm gonna give you an update on, on everything, I think the meeting, your touch of the August meeting.
Yeah.
Was a, a, a topic I'm gonna give you an update, those are on hold. Actually, how I was gonna start, that's what.
Go ahead. We're good, can we leave now?
Because I was supposed to go and talk to Greg tomorrow night about theirs. We have, we have seventeen minutes left for you. All right, so I have two mistakes in my packet. And, and I have two pieces of candy for anybody that can find them.
Oh, really?
Well, the first one was changes required by six. Twenty-two, is that the first one, because it's the wrong eight?
Dark chocolate or? Okay, there was one more. The other one you might not discover soon.
Well, I did read it, but I, I'm saying I don't remember.
I have Sanville and then nothing.
No, I, I have.
I know, well, I was gonna bring enough candy for everybody. All right, here we go. Okay, so, yeah, thank you, so Chris, my name's Christie Rivas. And were you all at the um, August seventeenth meeting?
That was when we had the LZ.
Yeah, yeah, I was on. So I've been the stormwater consultant for the town for quite a few years now, um. I had a couple of years that I wasn't your consultant, but um, since two thousand and three, really, since the town became regulated for the stormwater district is. Quite a while. And um. So tonight we have three. So tonight we have three ordinance changes in front of you as a result of that stormwater permit. And, um. One update on that August. Low impact development, discussion that we have, so. I'll talk about the three changes in a little bit, but on the low impact development, so you'll remember that I, um. On, on August seventeenth, when I came in. Um, the work, the workshop was pretty brief, actually, it was via Zoom, all there, and it was pretty brief, it was just a half an hour, and it was some pretty dense material. So probably not enough time to go through it all. But, um, so low impact development is, um, you know. Basically, this development that, um, you're talking about off of industry driving. Um, metalcon road, right, it's like, that area is almost completely forested, like, the low impact development, as you know, my version of, of it is. When, when it rains on that, um, on that area, most of that rainwater is gonna stay. Um, on the property, it's gonna, a lot of it's gonna go back, but transcribe, a lot of it is gonna infiltrate. So most of the really light rainstorms, they're gonna stay. On, on the property, but as soon as all those homes get onto the property, then you have all the impervious surfaces. There are gonna be pollutants that are gonna build up, fertilizers, all kinds of stuff, it's gonna run off faster, harder. Um, if you did not implement low end development strategies. So the idea of low impact development is that whatever rain falls on that. Um, and whatever those habitats are, I think they're, is as unchanged as they can be, that like the natural environment. Kind of looks at that development the same way, pre-development as it does post-development, minimal impact, the low impact. So it's a really broad concept and it's, um, very, um, it's, there's a lot of creativity, these civil engineers. That they have to, you know, figure out how to do that with stormwater runoff. And so on that, um, workshop that we had, we had been working for over a year on a model ordinance for low impacted element. Cause we knew that that change was coming, we knew that we were gonna have to. Implement standards at the town levels for all thirty regulated communities. For low impact developments, we started working on it a year and a half ago, we got the model ordinance done last summer. Um, and then at that August seventeenth meeting, I kind of hit a few of the highlights of it. For you, but we had to submit a, um, a document to the DEP. Saying what our intent was for, um, low impact development, and we, we basically submitted the model ordinance concepts. So we submitted that in September. Um. Friends of Castle Bay commented on that, when it went out for a Clean Water Act public comment, so DEP had to send it out. Sent it out, Friends of Castle Bay, the not-for-profit organization out of Portland. They commented for all thirty communities and they said, um. That they didn't like it, didn't think it went far enough, it needs to be much more stringent, uh, it needs to be for smaller sites. Um, they need to be townwide, and there were a lot of comments. But the main DEP. Um, knows how controversial that's gonna be, and they basically accepted the town's submittal without comment. So for low impact development, we have the model ordinance, that's kind of what we propose, that's what we think we're gonna have to implement by twenty twenty-four. We have a whole extra year on that one, June thirty.
Is there any reason we can't straighten the model?
Well, we had to submit our intent to. Adopt standards, so we've listed out the standards in that document and we can provide it again. What standards we, you know, we thought were reasonable and appropriate based on the, the other, you know, other work I have done as a consultant for you guys. Um. So you, we can stray from it, but I believe that the process is a little unclear, because we're kind of in new ground on, on process for this permit. Um. That if we wanna stray from the model ordinance and make things less stringent than we submitted in September. Um, yeah, then we'd have to go back to DEP for Clean Water Act public comment again, but if we wanna make it more stringent, yes, we can.
It's not a model, um, it's not, but a model plan in that it's a template.
It's a template, yeah.
It, but it's a. It's not a suggestion and a convenience, it's that this is what's been approved by DEP and then we're gonna have to use it.
Cause it's been approved by the.
Okay, without us changing, okay.
So if we do wanna change it, if you guys want me to come back and you wanna do like a more detailed. You'll look like, oh, look, we have all the time in the world, let's have Christie come back and really dig in. To the low impact development standards that we're gonna implement. I, I could do that next summer, you know, next Christmas, when it, you know, nobody else wants to come. Anyway, so we could dig into those standards and so you really get a good feeling, you're gonna have to get a good feeling for them anyway, by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um, but we're on hold, we're on hold for those for right now. Mostly because even though the DEP approved them. Um, and it would, seems like it would be more efficient to just, you know, get it all done now. Um, the, the, uh, the DEP is also decided to open up their state development, chapter five hundred standards. Statewide, so they're embarking on a new stakeholder process, they're gonna change development standards in the state. Pretty, in a pretty significant way over the next eighteen months to two years. And we wanna see, my, my recommendation to the council is that. You should wait and see how that chapter five hundred. Those changes are going, um, the actual text that the DEP said was, you know. We might, in, in, we might incorporate some low impact development measures that you guys might wanna. Incorporate into your own town stand.
So it's on hold, well. LID is twenty twenty-four. Where i- is the DEP just starting their chapter five hundred changes, because I guess, okay, so. Is it on hold because you're recommending it, it's put on hold, or because the state is saying. Hey, you don't need to adopt these by twenty twenty-four, because we're gonna do this, that could screw everything else up that you've already done.
They didn't actually say that in the letter, but they. Written interpretation, right?
So that's my question.
It's my recommendation as your consultant that you, that you at, at least hold until the summer.
This is what, if anything, they produce.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're probably not even gonna have their first stakeholder meeting until March or April of this year. And so what we'll see then will be a schedule. How long it's gonna take.
So then we're gonna get into the same thing that we're in right now with the LD two thousand and three. Uh. You have all these wonderful things, but now we're changing it here, so. There's gonna be somewhere along the line, some legislative action that's gonna. Help us and push that LID implementation out.
Yes, yeah, yes, and so chapter five hundred might do that and then. We might get another year and, you know, DEP would say, oh, we did such a good job with chapter five hundred that, you know, the MS fours. Can rely on it, so you don't have to implement your own model ordinance, that would be the best of all, we don't have to. We can just incorporate chapter five hundred by reference.
Can, can we?
Two years.
Can we back to the screening issue? Can we actually implement things that are strict?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's what I really.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I would love to hear.
It can always be more strict.
You can always.
So, trying to sort of, trying to sort of some good, good news on that, we have a little bit of time on that.
Some extra time, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's kind of good news, bad news, it would have been more efficient to. You know, have, have been able to do all of the ordinance changes at once.
Okay, well, we've got a little bit more time on that, so.
Now, it's, that was a lot, so I wanted to kind of get through that. So we're not talking about low impact development tonight. You know, we're not talking about the same stuff that we talked about in August, we're kind of talking about stuff that actually I think I came to talk to you about in, um. Last year.
I was not here at that meeting, but I did read your memo.
Okay, so I did, I did come in April, I'll give you, uh, and I'll give you a little more of an understanding of what, of what these ordinance. So no, no presentation today that's, um, walking you through the papers, so. The letter talks about the three, um, ordinance changes and then the second page of the letter is, is what I told you about the low impact development for. Refresher. So I'll jump into the three pages.
Yep.
So, um, this, I, I've, I've done this for a few communities now, and I, I like, I like the way I did it for you guys here. I tried to divide these ordinance changes into concepts. Um, and actually it worked out well for you guys, because you have separate chapters for each of the three kind of changes that we're gonna do, some people they're mixed. So the first one is, um. Some, uh, the proposed changes for chapter ninety-six, the non-storm water discharge, um, ordinance. And, um, this non-storm water discharge ordinance has been on the books since two thousand and six, they've been regulated since two thousand and three. This is a Clean Water Act requirement, that you have this ordinance on the books. The ordinance says, do not dump things into our storm drain system, that's illegal, no pollutants in our storm drain system.
You mean like big car oil?
Car oil, the paint. Um, drywall, mixed, like when people are washing out their paintbrushes, drywall, um, they can't connect. Their sump pumps and with their washing machines and discharge that into the. Heat forms rating systems, lots, all that kind of stuff, they have no pollutants and they go into your storm drain system, so here's this quick story. Remember last year at the bank? They were dumping the paint. Yes, yes. It happens all the time. Cause not everybody knows that those catch basins go out to the water bodies, they think they go to the sanitary sewer. Yep, no, but that's just a good example of, that's how people utilize, so it's scary.
Yeah.
Yep, so that kind of stuff happens all the time, so, um, the code officer administers this on ordinance. All thirty communities have these on the books. The change that we have to make is, is pretty straightforward. Um, the general permit just wants us to tweak a little bit of language to say that. When we identify something like somebody dumping paint in. That has to cease and desist as expeditiously as possible. Right, it's a season to the, and then, and then the other thing is that. Um, if it were a connection like from somebody's basement out to the storm drain system, and that we discovered. Through doing a plumbing inspection, the fact is illegal. Um, they are only gonna get sixty days to fix it, sometimes these have been dragging out in the state. And so they wanna make sure that they had a six day, um, limit in there to correct any illicit connections, generous. And if, we also know that it's very difficult to get, um, a contractor sometimes these days, so there is, um, also language in here to show that. Um, if they can't do it in sixty days, for some reason, they can work with the code officer to come up with. And again, the word expeditious, an expeditious schedule to get that corrected, so. That's the concept. Okay, so that's, um, that kind of the introductory concept, so. Um, on page three of your packet is the actual red line strikeouts that, um, proposed for you. Um, and so the first two are from, uh, the first, the first changes are from section ninety. Six, uh, to the definitions. And we just have the two definitions that we're gonna make changes to, so. I have, um, underline and italics for the new text that's proposed. And then, you know, strike through for anything that's gonna be deleted. So these two definitions, I'm actually just doing a little bit of cleanup here on definitions. Um, we just wanna make sure that. Um, ordinance date this, these, not that we're gonna state that. Permit, the general permit, it gets renewed every five years. Um, and that. Uh, definition's a little bit dated, it's back from when we first became regulated in June thirty, two thousand and three, so I wanted to just make that sound a little more, um. So we don't have to go in an amendment anymore. So including any amendment over there, so we're just gonna reference our most recent permit.
I have no question, that was very, very straightforward, I saw everyone straightforward frankly, with the exception of that one that requires the inspections. That was more of a concern to me. There was that, I know I saw that.
Um, in the next, the post-construction?
Yeah. Yeah, it was the monitoring and the making sure that everything, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're jumping way ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but go back to what you had to talk about.
Is this too detailed, should I, should I go more quickly through it, or? Okay, okay. Okay. Yeah, cause I know you gave her your paper, so I'm sorry.
So I'm not even paying attention on this.
It's cause he didn't get me. Okay, we'll get him, so. So, um, the next definition is just cleaning up the definition of urbanized area. So then, on the enforcement side, um, we have the text. Um, that we're adding in that the elimination of this stormwater discharges need to, need to have that elimination need to happen as best as possible. Questions, I presume?
Nope.
Um, and then on page four, um, we have item two. Which is, um, the, the part where we say, you know, if the elimination of the non-storm water discharge is not possible within sixty days of identification of the source. You know, then we have to make sure that they work with the code officer to get a schedule, she'll, she'll put a schedule in the. Notice the violation, but. And then, and then the last one is again, I'm just doing a little cleanup on statutory. But the question, that was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So the next, um, section is, will affect chapter one oh eight. Which is the post-construction stormwater management ordinance. And I like to think of that as the post-construction maintenance. Ordinance, right, so, um. The first one of these sites, um, that we've had that triggers this is, um, Bittersweet Lane, the HOA. Um, on Bittersweet Lane, they are responsible for maintaining all of the rain gardens that are in those, um. Yards, and so they have, uh, as they, when they take that over, they will have to sign a maintenance agreement, oh, we have a cast lane also. Yeah, and we did cast lane. Um, so they also have stormwater infrastructure and, you know, these are like more complicated systems now, and they have to be maintained or they won't function. And in fact, they can even be detrimental to the environment, like the bacteria can build up or, you know, so. They, they do need to be maintained, so that, this ordinance has been on the books since two thousand and nine. And so we're making a couple of changes, one of them is just like on the illicit discharge piece. One of the changes is that if the HOA or the owner. Has to do maintenance on that system, they have to get it done within sixty days, they can't. People have been submitting annual reports, not in this town, but in other, where it's like. Oh, we have to do maintenance, didn't get to that, oh, we have to do maintenance, oh, we didn't get to it, so. We get the sixty days coming in.
That's on page two.
And that's on page six. Yep, again, same with the deficiencies, so the text is a little different in this one, in this, um. So, right, very straightforward, and then let's see, we're also making, we also have a new definition here on the qualified. Post-construction stormwater inspector. So that's always been.
I'm not looking at my phone, I'm reading the memo.
Are you, okay, good. So there's an, a definition of a qualified inspector and the new permit says that, that. These entities have to use a qualified inspector, again, in many communities, the owners are just sending in a form that says. Yeah.
HOA president has to be.
So the way that I have this structured now, the HOA, someone at the HOA could be the post-construction inspector. Some communities have a definition for qualified post-construction stormwater inspector that says. Um, and you may not be associated with the property in any way as an owner or operator of the property. So that is an option I could build into this. But then they'll have to hire someone, so then you're having them to, but it is, it's both ways, yeah.
What is the? Required.
An annual inspection.
What happens? I'm gonna hire someone, you think happy day, get your way, he's gonna pay for it, town doesn't have to worry about it. But. The town can't do that, the town's gonna have to monitor it and look and, and force the compliance with it. Call this material. And then ultimately be responsible for the enforcement.
Yes.
So this is the one, you know. That. I have a, I have a, a problem with that, because here we are, we're talking about all these new developments going in. Metalcon one, two, have stormwater. This new one's gonna have stormwater, I don't remember exactly why. But they're gonna say it was gonna be a town road, but I think there's gonna be an HOA there somehow, you know. I do think there's gonna need to, at this point, need to be some conversation, because ultimately. The town is going to have to have some follow-up, and record keeping and maintenance and.
Oh, there'll be an impact.
There needs to be an impact fee here associated with this.
So that's something we're.
Impact fees.
Been talking, Jen, Jenny's been talking.
Yeah.
Just in general. Um.
Cause there is an impact, even if all the HOA is gonna do it, wonderful.
Right.
Someone at the town level still needs to maintain these records and ultimately report on it and follow up if something.
Works department has somebody who does that, but, um. He also does other things outside of just that, specifically.
Right, but, but we were talking about a development. Right, but, but we were talking about a development. On kind of getting out of town, I forget what the name of it was, isn't that back? Squirrely area by the condos that were put in. And they were talking about, you know, all these filtration systems going in and like. You're putting it in and then the town's gonna have to end up maintaining, you know, and so that need, there really does need to be an impact fee.
Well, we also, in, in light of. A letter from the police department, also, we don't have impact fees for police or schools or. Dover has impact fees for those. When you add thirty, we added thirty-nine units in Dover. And there's an impact fee for police we have to pay for fire department.
That's a huge policy level conversation for the council.
Yeah, you've been talking to him, Joe. It's on the radar.
Yeah.
So there is, but it's, it's on the radar, but it's close.
Well, this is gonna help prompt that along.
I like it. Um so I, I'm, I um. I have worked for the town for quite a while and when Terry Oliver was the public works director for this town. Um he and I worked on developing a fee structure for um. This very thing, exactly what you're talking about. And I believe it is still in your code, but it is not been. Um enforced or collected in the past. But you do have a fee in your, and I'm, I was looking to see if I could come up with that.
Pick that up too.
It's in there now.
Yeah, I think we're gonna wanna look at.
I think it's nine percent of the stormwater infrastructure. Um you collect and keep in order to help with the tracking of this.
Interesting, yeah. Yeah, I mean, maybe we do and we just don't know it, and Jen, Jen will be able to let us know how that. Yep, so I'll take, I'll take that on it, ask her tomorrow or next week.
Yeah, I, I can look at it, just with my brain is spinning from trying to remember how to go through this in a lot. Um but to also to your point, Greg, I think um uh. The, the, the third change that we're making that, that we're required to by the permit is that. People can't just submit a piece of paper that says, oh, everything functions. They have to actually provide us with the qualified inspectors' report. And most, I do, I review these for other communities and most of these reports are pretty straightforward. They give you a real nice summary at the beginning. That says everything's functioning as intended, no critical maintenance was needed, you know, at the, no immediate critical maintenance. Needed at this time, you know, just minor, minor maintenance and upkeep. You know, or they'll list.
Let's see, we're gonna need to keep track of that because again. You can say the HOA has to maintain it or, or do the report, but then, oh, hey, we found a problem, hey, town, sure, road. So who maintains the ownership of that infrastructure there? So ultimately. You're gonna, the town's gonna be on the hook, so.
The town will only take over a road, they'll only take the right of way and anything within that right of way. So if there's any catch basins or anything, the town will be in charge of that. Anything outside of that right of way is the HOA. But. If something happens within the HOA, outside of that right of way that then interferes with the town. So at the time of taking the town over, they have to make sure that that's all settled. So that if something does happen, we're not, you know, we're not a creep at the town because we took over that right of way. Um it's actually deeded to us and the HOA um actually gets a deed from developer to the HOA.
Yeah, again, I still think. So I know what level of ownership there, there still makes even more case.
Oh, I agree. My question is. Isn't, would it be? At the HOA. Would it be easier for them to just? Contract out at a, a major way to a stormwater consultant to do all this work?
Most of the time they do, they, most of the time they do.
Yeah, cause that's what I, I mean, you think of like coal name is only one or two, very small.
Yes.
Bitter Sweet, it's twenty-four of them.
Yes.
And that's a lot.
It's a lot. They will have, many of the landscaping companies are now becoming certified as post-construction inspectors because. Then they can, they are familiar with it. And when they're coming in, they know what plants to replace them with and they know. You know, what the right kind of bark mulch is to use and.
As part of the maintenance, part of the going in with the back trucks and sucking these things out.
When, um yeah, when they need it and when they're outside the town right of way, yeah, when the private people have to do that. Parking lots, a lot of, you know, I um just sent out sixty emails for um the city of Bitterburg last week. Telling everybody their, their reports are all due.
Yeah.
And uh and they're, you know, so all of those commercial properties. They have to maintain their own catch basins with the back of trucks and.
We do keep a spreadsheet of post.
We do.
Pre and post construction and if I'm making from the planning board. That Christie had, has had gone out since you've been here.
Yep.
And it will list like, here's the new construction. Um you know, like uh what is it that we just closed out? Coal link?
Yeah.
Completely got closed out because we went through the whole process. So now we know yearly. Just yearly, I know that I'll be needing to get that yearly.
Yep, so she has to send a letter reminder.
Right, so I, I have that on my radar. Um as helping out Jeff Doyle and Jay Redmacher at public works. So there's some work on our end, but it's only one or two. Imagine if we had, you know, half a dozen of these. That's a whole difference. Discussion.
Yeah, it does start to get complicated and then you've got, so it wasn't just sixty emails, it then it's, you know, three or four emails back and forth with each person, you know. Oh, I forgot, oh, yeah, oh, we didn't do the maintenance, oh, oh, yeah, oh, no, here's me, oh.
Right.
Right, doesn't just end there.
Right.
So it does, yeah, so I agree, the impact fee is, is big and it, it should be um identified upfront to as people are coming in.
Yeah.
And we'll look for that and we'll. So any questions on the post-construction piece? Those are the three changes.
No.
Even though.
Thanks, thank you.
So now you're on to the.
So, yeah, so I thought I'd take page seven if that's okay and. These are the, this is a little, just a little more substantive than the um two changes on the, on the first, the other two chapters. Um so this will affect both the subdivision and the zoning ordinance and. Um the, the general permit is requiring, this is, this is the one in April I gave a more detailed presentation on this. Kind of a heads up and council got a very brief summary also last year in February. Um about these changes. So the, the way that the permit is, our general permit is, it, it says that. We have to adopt the chapter five hundred state standards for erosion and sedimentation control. We have to bring those down from the state and you have to embed them into your ordinances somehow. So that Jen can have enforcement capability over each and every technical standard. There are much more detailed and technical than the current language that you have now. The language you have in your ordinances now that. I pulled for you to take a look at, it says things like. You know, erosion of soil and sedimentation of water courses shall be minimized. By employing BMPs specified in the guidance manual.
And that's in two thousand and three.
And that, that guidance thing is from two thousand and three, yeah. So it, most of the time you also say um or latest revision, but. I have updated that where I've seen it, so.
So you're seeing chapter five hundred. So with the L I D, that, there's that little squirrely issue there, how does that impact this one here?
So this will also likely. Get become impacted, yeah, like that, that, their updates, when they're updating chapter five hundred, they are. Likely not going to make chapter five hundred any less stringent than it is. So one of the things I thought would be easiest for you guys to do would be to just say. You know, the. Erosion sedimentation control standards are hereby adopted by reference. So that's the. Quick language that I've got for you for red line strikeout. Some communities are um bringing them down and adding them in as a new appendix, listing them all out, just basically. Pulling all that text, we reworded a little bit. And we actually put it in a technical appendix to your zoning ordinance and your subdivision point.
What's the preference?
I, I like um especially that they came out with the fact that they're gonna, they're gonna. Update chapter five hundred. I think adoption by reference will be a little cleaner and a little neater. Um it'll also take us less work now, so that if there are changes in the future, we can evaluate that as we go.
Makes sense, cause then you'll have to monitor changes if it's changed, you know, you already have it referenced, you don't have to update your doctor's.
Right, right, exactly. Who would be going back again in a year to, to change all those technical elements also?
I've got it right here, I'm looking at it.
It also makes it easier for the developers. Now they know, they are, they, you know, they, they know they have to comply with chapter five hundred, so if your ordinance says. Yeah, and, and we're gonna be helping to enforce that. They know that um they don't have any newer difference standards than what is already required at the state level.
Cool, okay. So there. You can keep going, you.
Uh no, I think I, I was kinda just looking at my notes, I'll wish them one.
So the question from here is, there's two bodies that are authorized to initiate the origins changes, but only one can adopt, and that's the, the council.
Okay.
So, but, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so my question is. What is, what's being asked of us? So if we're gonna have to say, oh, hey, let's adopt these orders changes, right? Now we have to go through our process.
Yes.
And then the council's gotta go through the process. So it's, it's gonna really just lengthen. I, I, I think from a process perspective, my preference would be. To, hey, we reviewed this. Say, hey, we're asking the council, we reviewed this and attached our, our comments. Uh let's see here, the uh, what was it?
Twenty twenty-two.
No, that, that, uh, chapter ninety-six. We recommend that they be adopted as presented.
Yes.
And then, you know, chapter uh one oh eight.
Right.
This presented more of a conversation and concern for the planning board. And while up here you have to adopt it, you should also consider the implementation of. Impact fees. And then chapter. One twenty-one and then uh one forty.
Yep.
Uh we would recommend that you adopt it by reference.
Yes.
Presented by reference and that way it gives it to them, we reviewed it, we looked at it. And it puts it right back where it needs to be because the impact fees is a policy conversation that they need to have.
Yeah.
And the other ones, they say, we don't have any really much say with that.
But I do think they're looking for your recommendation. I do think that's why.
And so what I, so that would be my.
For you guys to give it.
That would be my recommendation from here.
Okay.
And I'm happy to drop the letter as such.
Can I?
And, and we can send it to the council.
I just, I have a suggestion for one amendment where you said we have an option of requiring every higher professional as opposed to doing themselves, and I would, I would ask that we have that.
Oh, yes, to the post-construction one, yes, yes, I can pull that language, yeah, that's.
And that, what Greg said sounds.
So, but I'm still confused. You know, Jen, maybe help me, help me understand. So uh Sanville. They're gonna put in their score in drainage and they're gonna have the catch bases, everything up there, but the, where does the HOA come in on that? Because the contractor developers coming in, putting this stuff in. And now. Oh, town road, yay, we accept it. Now it's our problem, the towns. Or can we say the HOA is responsible for that? I don't think we could.
No, so the HOA would only be responsible whatever's not in the right.
Which is nothing.
No, no, they have.
Oh, the, okay, I, I'm thinking of catch basins and stuff like that, yeah. Right.
Catch bases, we, we can't, we pay someone else. Side of itself, but to come in and do that, you're. Actually, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
We actually have um a situation like this going on in South Fork right now. And we'd be happy to share more information with you if you want it um about the process because it's a private road now. And it's been a lengthy process to get it to where it is and it's still not ready to go. And that's, that's the situation, it's Bitter Sweet Lane.
Yep.
Each one has their own little pool in front of their home or the back where how old the situation is. So when we, they want us to take the road over, we would take the road over only in the right of way, the structure that was built. That the sidewalk to maintain. You know. Um anything in, within that right of way, a catch basin, say, per se. There could be a couple of little structures, we would maintain that, which is okay, we're, we're okay doing that. But then outside of that, especially with Bitter Sweet, because every home has something. That HOA is gonna have, okay.
So what, so there's really two parts to it. One, you have the HOA maintenance that. Someone's gotta follow up on it, so there's an impact fee there. But then there's also, oh, hey, we would love to take on this as a public road. And then there's the impact there, you know, again, you're adding to the storm drain, to the requirements for.
They do pay.
Before we take that road over, a lot of things have to happen. It's, it's a process. But so in order to take that over, we need to make sure that we're covering the town's. Infrastructure, I guess, by owning that road. Knowing that the HOA is going to take care of what they need to take care of. That's why I was questioning. This HOA may decide. Contract out because it's a lot, it's gonna be a lot. The gentleman who is, is the president understands that, we, I have conversations with him. Um, he's not certified, right? He's not even close to being certified.
I'm saying, and my concern is, I, I get the property tax issue. But it's a different thing, oh, we're collecting property taxes and then someone standing before the council saying, hey, I need more people to do this because I'm getting overwhelmed with everything. Your property taxes change if it's a town road or if it's a, well, so then there isn't a change that would offset the cost.
But they built, but when you do a development, the point is they put in houses that then pay property tax and so it's sort of a win for them.
Right, but, but, but in essence, with an impact fee, at least they're getting something.
So this is what I.
During the development phase from the developer, how they add that into the possible instructions up to them.
This is what I've learned about the impact fee conversation here. South for which, um it's just education at this point, it's educating. Um why you need them, what they are, what they're used for. It's an education piece right now, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, well, this is.
Yep. I think they request a letter, a memo from you stating that. I number, number two, I forget what it was, the post-construction maintenance orders part, just put that in there. We also would like to see. Impact fees, suggestion of discussion starting.
Yeah. While you have to adopt it. And we're gonna make that change that, that you suggested, which I think is good.
Yeah.
Cause you don't be some retired engineer on that street just besides.
But you also could even sample thirty-five of those. We don't know what, what we, like a plan, you know. That's a, that's a lot. And so somebody. Moving into that development. Might just prefer, here's my. My fee or here's my, my part to share in the contracting services out.
I just wanna be careful because um symbols and applications on the. So if you wanna discuss like Bitter Sweet or something that has already gone through and.
Or some future, some future development, cluster development that'll have thirty-five units would be a lot, and so. Development.
Any future development coming into South Fork. In the next year is going to. By two thousand twenty-four. Summer of two thousand twenty is gonna have to be impacted by all of this.
So just to kind of go back to what we need to do tonight then. I think we heard from Hershey making it a requirement. I have no problem with that. Uh, is that a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion? But if we're gonna send it to the council.
But she's amending it and then we're gonna pass, yeah, gonna make a motion to adopt what she's written.
Okay.
Doesn't, you know, yeah, you probably wanna see the.
Like you do need a motion to send it to the council.
Right, right, well, with the, with the comments, so we'll wait.
Oh, yeah.
And then we can just kind of do a. Well, you guys are right, we can do it now.
We can adopt it as amended, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. We'll send it to.
Motion.
Okay.
That we adopt the suggestions as presented. Um. In your, in the, what everyone, you know what I mean?
Thirty of, one as presented is in December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two memo. And I would add that we have, have a, add a commentary to each little phase that this one, we see no issues adopt as. You know, presented, this one. One oh eight, I think it was, with the, the.
The change to um and a qualified inspector has no right or title or ownership.
Well, I'm talking about the qualified inspector that, you know, while i- i- it's apparent that this needs to be adopted and put into the code. We would caution the board, the council, and really seriously consider in having a discussion about impact fees.
Okay.
So you can go ahead, it's gonna, this has to go in, but you really need to back it up and. Talk about that. And then as far as the sedimentation control goes. I think it was adopted and, and insert by reference.
Right. Okay, we need to vote on the wish for a second.
Can you just clarify your exact motion, just by the record?
Can I see the piece of paper? A motion that as discussed. We adopt. The language. To be changed their ordinance in the memo submitted September three of twenty twenty-two. With annotations.
In separate cover letter.
Yeah, okay, in a separate cover letter. So one is adopted as presented, the first one, the next one is with an amendment. So one is adopted as presented, the first one. The next one is with an amendment to the stormwater control officer qualifications. And the third one is implemented as reference to section five hundred. Um, and then, and I think it's part of the cover letter you would suggest, strongly suggest looking at impact fees. Um, as a whole, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Who's gonna write the letter? Take a crack at it.
If you want. Am I writing it?
I like to do it. That, that's a half a page.
So my last mistake was on page nine.
Hold on, there's a motion on the table.
It's been, it's been motioned. Anybody second that? Chris, do you have any uh questions, comments or concern?
Nope, you've covered it.
Okay, so it's been motioned. Was there a second? No, okay, and no further conversation. Uh, roll call, Chris?
Aye.
Aye, Greg, aye.
Hershey, aye.
All right, great. Motion passed and we'll get that all wrapped up. And we'll do a little dirty letter and adapt the memo and good to go.
And that'll make it to the second town council meeting.
Yeah.
So. They don't need it again though.
That is great. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, just send it both of us.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, let's. Listen, uh, do we need to discuss tonight those words going back to the new business, the item we tabled or we put that off?
You can table it.
Yeah, let's table that. Uh, we'll bring it up unless it was quick. No, okay, we'll table them. Uh, to probably not next meeting, but the meeting after.
I already got that too. That's fine. Can you motion it?
I will, it's tabled.
Perfect.
Yeah, we'll just, uh, be, put it on.
Well, you know your Robert's rules.
I know that the motion was just a table, but if you put it on the agenda, we'll take it off the table when we're talking then.
Okay. Um.
So. We can do that.
Sure. But what I was gonna say is be careful putting a date on it yet. They have a few things that are heavy.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll just. Table it, but put it on for a reminder. If it doesn't work, take it off. That would be my suggestion, just so we don't forget about it. Okay, uh, informational material, uh, a reminder of the. Joint Town Council and Planning Board Workshop, cannabis licensing, solar farm ward is January seventeenth to six thirty P M. Be there or be square. Uh, schedule the planning board training with S and P D C. What's that about?
I don't, you.
I attended my mandatory training by the town, so.
Yeah, this is something Tim. Have asked that we, we tried to.
Specific type thing.
Let me just, let me just tell you a quick backstory. We had um S and P D C, James and uh Lee J coming from down to the town. Call uh to do some staff training um because of this, you know, new staff in different positions. Um, and the training they gave was really, really good and unique and it was quick. It wasn't, it didn't take long, maybe an hour. Um, so our town manager has suggested that maybe we set a date for our planning board to. Meet with Lee J and James and have that training as well.
So.
Yes. It is gonna be more, it's gonna be more specific to us.
So looking to the future then, a meeting that would. Really enough team that having additional meetings, I'd like to keep it to a Wednesday. Could we? Look ahead and like, and like say, hey, an hour of one of your meetings in March.
Yep, yeah, sure. Absolutely. Great. Yep.
Cool.
But I, we will get dates due on that and see what works. Great.
If there's anything that works on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Thanks, Christie. All right, so we're good to that. We'll wait to hear from you then. Okay. Uh, any member comments? Chris, any comments?
Um, just a point of inquiry. Uh, to Amy or Jenny, when do I need to get my binder back to your office?
Um, so by Wednesday of next week.
Okay, thank you. Is that, that's all you need from me? Right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, would it become a?
Do you want to handle that?
Oh, well, I'm not gonna get into detail. I think it's easy to say that the absences are excused probably for this month and next month as well. There's other things going on there. But if you want information, you can contact him. I did have a conversation and, no, no, he has, he has indicated his interest and then. He was gonna be here and then very last minute, another issue cropped up. And it's gonna take away for a couple of weeks. So, uh, perfectly legit, he's excused, so we'll just rely on Chris. It'd be no worse for the work, but we have an alternate. Uh, you know, we're gonna be dealing with some pretty heavy issues over the next couple of meetings, so.
I have one comment and I'm just gonna bring it up again because I don't see it on here, but the joint meeting that was supposed to happen with you two and town council all with, I think.
They appointed two people.
New people though. It wasn't, originally there was two and then they changed them after the last. After the election, right? It was gonna be, it was me and Hershey, but then it was Jeff and Mallory.
Now, right, I don't think Mallory is. I think we just need to revisit that.
What was that?
Well, so back in August, back in August, when we were having the meeting, you were getting hit with this stuff.
Right.
We were getting hit with the L I D and then there was something else. So there was the complaint LE two thousand and three and then these MS force things. And we said, you know. As a matter of expediency, we should just work together and really just keep our respective boards informed, but really the reality is. We're really kind of just advisory. So we can come up with stuff and make recommendations and push it right to the council. And we don't have time to sit here and have public hearing after public hearing after public hearing. Make a recommendation and they can go and do their public hearings on that.
The reason, the reason why I like doing jointly with.
That's what we're gonna do.
Oh, the reason why I like the choice is because, you know, we keep on setting stepping and then it just keeps coming back to us and then we do. You know. Hannibal and Soul are, those two sound pretty familiar, right? Keep on sending them out and then they get kicked back. We try to think on the whack and I send it to the council. Now we need a joint meeting. It would just be nice to get ahead of it so we don't have to.
Yeah, I agree.
Keep it.
I think, I think everybody would agree with that.
Okay. As long as it's still on the radar.
I think policies and procedures are slowly tightening up for both. Playing board and town council trying to get, you know, it's a slow process that we're getting.
But as far as the uh LE two thousand and three, that's kind of on hold now too.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be a serious amendment.
Right, so that's kind of on hold. This L I D thing is kind of on. Oh, oh.
Yeah.
So it's kind of lessened the need to frankly get together right away, but. It's gonna happen to get assembled.
Yeah.
So in three years, we'll sit back and have the same question. Remember that you run that, you haven't done any.
Sounds like mom.
Yes.
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 No.